Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we had to get in here this evening. Lord, we ask of you for western city commission and the decisions that we make are of the best interest of our citizens. Lord, this is National Law Enforcement Week, and Lord, we pray for all the law enforcement officers who are out there. I saw today where there's been fifty-nine law enforcement officers that have been killed in the line of duty this year. Lord, we have to come back to you and bring some reasonable and sensible to this country. So please look over and bless us with all these things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all here this evening. First on the agenda this evening is the approval of our ordinance from September the twenty-ninth. They have been distributed. So is there any additional suggestions or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion. Some move, but a motion approved, we have a second. Motion is second. All in favor of sitting in front of saying aye.
Aye.
Need a motion carried unanimously. Next we have proclamation twenty-one dash oh nine. See that so we can now go over it. We'll think about it. Okay. Proposition twenty-one dash oh nine. Whereas the city of Winter Garden supports the goals and ideals of National Sudden Cardiac Arrest Awareness Month. And whereas sudden cardiac arrest is the leading cause of death in the United States and takes the lives of more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in the United States each year, according to the Heart Rhythm Society. And whereas anyone can experience sudden cardiac arrest, including infants, high school athletes, and people in their thirties and forties who have no sign of heart disease. And whereas sudden cardiac arrest is extremely deadly with the National Heart, Lung, and Blood Institute giving a disease mortality rate of approximately ninety-five percent. To have a chance at surviving an attack, the American Heart Association states that the victim of sudden cardiac arrest must receive a life-saving defibrillation within the first four to six minutes of an attack. And whereas for every minute that passes without a shock from an automated external defibrillator, the chances of survival decreases by approximately ten percent. Life-saving treatments for sudden cardiac arrest are effective if administered in time. And whereas according to the joint research by the American College of Cardiology and the American Heart Association, implantable cardioverter defibrillators are ninety-eight percent effective in protecting people at risk for sudden cardiac arrest. According to the American Heart Association, cardiopulmonary resuscitation and early defibrillation with an automated external defibrillator will double the chances that a victim will survive. And whereas the Yale-DuHaven Hospital and the New England Journal of Medicine state that women and African-American are at higher risk than the general population for dying as a result of sudden cardiac arrest, yet this fact is not well-known to people at risk. And whereas there is a need for comprehensive educational efforts designed to increase awareness of sudden cardiac arrest and related therapies among medical professionals and the greater public in order to promote early detection and proper treatment of this disease and to improve quality of life. And therefore, it's my great pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the city of Winter Garden to declare the month October twenty-two-one as National Sudden Cardiac Awareness Arrest Awareness Month, and I urge all citizens to join in supporting this initiative. Give this to Mr. Cobb. Next we'll have first reading of public hearing of proposed ordinances. Orders twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Orders twenty-one dash twenty-seven, orders for the city of Winter Garden for rezoning. Certain real property generally described as approximately seven-point-two-five lots minus acres of land generally located at six-sixteen, six-twenty, six-twenty-eight, and six-thirty-four South Lakeview Avenue. West Story Road, two-fifteen West Cypress Street, two-two West Lafayette Street, six-fifteen South Central Avenue and South Central Avenue, South of West Story Road, west of South Lake Avenue and east of South Central Avenue from R-two residential district to PUD. Planning and development provide for certain PUD requirements in describing the development as the Lakeview Village Estates PUD provide for sub-ability providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Evening, mayor and commissioners. This application is a request to rezone the properties located at six-one-six, six-two-zero, six-two-eight, and six-three-four South Lakeview Avenue, West Story Road, two-fifteen West Cypress Street, two-two-four West Lafayette Street, six-one-five South Central Avenue and South Central Avenue from R-two to planning and development. The proposed development consists of twenty-six new single-family homes and fourteen new townhomes in three separate buildings as open space, parks, ponds, streets, and all associated site development. This application was originally submitted in two thousand eighteen, October two thousand eighteen. Under a different developer in October of two thousand twenty, another developer bought it and has continued with the same process. The existing future land use designation of low-density residential allows a maximum of six dwelling units per acre. The proposed development is at five-point-five acres, so it meets this requirement. This density is consistent and lower than some of the neighboring properties. Orange Tree Mobile Home Depot has a hundred-and-eight units on eighteen-point-one-eight acres, or five-point-nine-four units per acre. Staff has spent three years working on this project. We have worked diligently and changed elevations and changed elevations. Every home in there must have an eight-foot-deep front porch on it. The architecture is quality. The design is very quality. We're in. Proposed development is very unique. It offers a housing type desired by many people. And there's a neighborhood. It will have a nice park in the center of it, and everybody fronts on it. It creates a nice gathering area. As I said, the design ordinance, the ordinance has design criteria, and it creates a neighborhood much more desirable than what the duplex development under R-two zoning would allow. Staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the commission.
I'll go first. So there are aspects of this that I absolutely love. I think, and I want to get this on record to say that the home portion of this, the green space, the vertical elevation, is phenomenal. And I'm one-hundred percent behind that piece of it. Part I'm not in favor of, and you're well aware, is those fourteen townhomes. You know, we sat here as a board both in workshop and recently and said, you know, we're trying to move away from, you know, that higher density. And I get your point of the five-point-five versus a six in the R-two zone. But creating those townhomes and piloting them there is just not a desire of last day. If they could come back with something that eliminates those townhomes or is some of the design like that, I'd be the first guy to vote for that. But with those townhomes, that's not the level of density and that's not the long-term design I want to see for the community is packing those in. It's just, they just don't have a good shuffle. And I just want to move us away from that. So that, it's just not something I can support. And I don't know, and again, I hear three years working on this, two different developers. But, you know, they've got those twenty-six homes. I like it. Maybe just do something else, and the other pieces of the lot that doesn't include a townhome. That's, that's what's sticking with me, and I just can't go past. So that's for my fellow ordinance. That's, that's the piece I'd like to see is changed for two-four.
Amen, mayor.
Yes, sir. As working on this, as you know, this is allowable for duplexes. And at duplexes, the density is actually greater than the density that you're proving, so it's a reduction in density. The reason we work with the developer on this is because the last thing they want to see was a duplex going there because they tend not to be as good a quality. They tend not to elevate the community. So the goal of this in negotiating with developer was they have to have enough density for them to justify building this to make money off it. Doing this enabled them to make money. The quality of these units is unbelievable. So instead of having a community of more duplexes, you have a nice-looking community. You made these negotiations with the developer, and in the long run, this community, doing it this way so the duplex will actually bring up the quality of the entire neighborhood. As you know, this is one of the neighborhoods we've been working on for a great deal of time to improve, and we believe this will be the beginning of redevelopment. We did have a community meeting, and the neighborhood was not unanimous, but almost unanimous in support of it. There was one gentleman opposed, but most of the rest of the neighbors were all excited because they know it's going to have a significant impact, a positive impact on their, on their neighborhood.
And it creates a variety of housing that many people do desire.
I will counter that then. Thank you for that. It's an interesting thing. Duplexes. Nothing on here says anything about duplexes. Nobody asked for a duplex. And certainly as a board, we have, have the ability to approve or not approve others' zoning requests and other design requests. So if you're mindering that if we don't approve this, we might get duplexes, it doesn't really have a lot of weight with me. And yet, I like what we have here. In fact, in the details, and for those in the audience, great length when to make sure that no two houses sitting side by side look the same or across the street. They really made a great plan. Again, I love everything about this except for kind of all those townhomes, and there's three buildings, the fourteen townhomes. It's just, it kind of just dilutes all the great progress that I think this developer's put in there. That's, I hammered that enough, but that's where I'm.
And, you know, I'm as low density as anybody, you know, out here. Issue used to be, years ago, when we zoned all these things, like where Winter Garden Elementary School was, we zoned at R-two. And once the people have that zoning, and according to, you know, our ordinance, they are allowed to have a certain number of units. And I weigh that on everything I approve. Do I like townhomes? Not particularly, but I'd like acre lots, but we don't have that. So, you know, I guess at the end of the day, it's looking at the project and where we are. When you come in off of Story, you get down to Central, and it U-turns, you know, and becomes Lafayette Street. When you look, when I look at this, along the road, there's a thin strip of white, which, you know, signifies or indicates county. Are those homes in the county or are they in the city?
There's pockets.
Except along that one road, we've looked at, those were city right along that strip of land that's, there's a little narrow strip of land that looks like right away to Longston County. The homes adjacent to that are all city.
Those are city homes when you go down Central, and then it loops around and becomes Lafayette Street.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong side.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, my big thing is we're running out of, you know, just to comment, we're running out of woods in this town, so it's just, you know, but we have an option. We could buy it, I guess. Okay, any other questions?
So this is, this is R-two zoning already, and the land rights for R-two, what I understand you're saying, we could not deny a duplex project on R-two zoning because it's R-two zoning?
Yeah, he has vested right for six units per acre based on the R-two zoning. Believe it or not, I think a great deal of everything south of Smith Street is all zoned R-two in there. The city commission many years ago made that decision, probably unwisely, but everybody in that whole region does have the vested rights for the six units to an acre.
And they could just come to the site line, right, and then go.
Right, they could replat, or, yeah, replat, as long as they're in that code, they could do it.
So it's not like we could deny the duplexes. This is, this is a better option.
Correct.
Or deny a design duplex. I mean, we wouldn't really have much say.
We'd have no say in that. The ordinance has all these design requirements and it makes sure that the porch is the traditional look, all that. Neighborhood park, everything.
Isn't this also similar to, like, right decree?
It is a little bit similar to that. It's also very similar to the Oakland Park, south side.
Yeah, the design looks very much like Oakland Park. It's very pretty. I agree with, you know, trying to limit density, but it looks like it's very nice.
Sounds like we need to maybe look at our future zoning plan long-term and decide what we want. Commissioner, that's what.
We have a second, but attorney do it tonight.
You're not going to get, if somebody's got R-two, they're not going to.
They have the best.
Right. Not a way to go forward.
Yes.
And the neighbors too, except for the one, are not against, so that weighs heavily for me too.
That's what you're saying there. Property hunters have a suless and saying, I'll let you change my R-two.
I would have loved to change it over then, years ago, or change it to R-one, but.
And I was telling you, this has been a challenge for us all through, uh, south of Smith Street. We have people bringing in duplexes all the time. It really limits us what we can do. And it's, once again, an argument I make frequently is you got to be very careful in government. Those decisions you make in planning and zoning can haunt you for a long time. In fact, I think it was in the eighties when they created all that, that's the choice they made. And then once you've done that, you've given that property the vested right.
Any other questions from the commission? This is a public hearing, so we will open a public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak?
We're going to say, Saturday, two-two-one, North Order Street. I'd like a discussion, please, on the cost of these houses? And is there a plan for attainable housing to be included in the development?
I didn't hear your last part.
Is there a plan for attainable housing to be included in the development?
Not in this, there is no, like, affordable housing component of this, no. But the fact that there is more units does allow them to have the price lower.
So that would be the townhouse section, that be the low cost, go first. Do the developer discuss with you at all the cost of these houses?
They have discussed it. They just said it'll be market price. They're here. I know they'll answer that question. The building do have market value.
Well, I'm going to talk to you about being a registered nurse for fifty years, and I don't think I could afford one of those houses in there. Because I bet you they're going to sell for five-hundred-thousand dollars now. And I could not afford one of those houses. I couldn't afford it when I was working, when I was in my twenties and thirties. And I certainly couldn't afford it when I'm living in central Florida after moving to Washington, D.C. down here because I took a cut, a pay cut of fifty percent. So I really plead with the commission. So I know what came of these developments. And I know the developer wants to make money. I don't have any problem with that. And I want our, I want our city to be critic, and I want to have trees planted, gardens, places for people to walk. But we have to consider that we're pricing ourselves out of the attainable housing for registered nurses, nursing assistants, police, firemen, essential workers. And aren't we looking right now for essential workers? So do they have to drive from Mer Haven to get a job here? Do they have to drive from Brooklyn to get a job here? Now, I just really think it's important to think about this. I know this development is probably set in stone. There's no way to change it now. But I really plead with you to look forward and look at what used to be called affordable housing, but now we call it attainable housing.
And if I could ask you, it's actually what I, we're looking at very closely as a city staff, looking at regions, as you've stated. And when a garden has been very successful, we've been had very high architectural standards and done that. But of course, the byproduct of that is you drive up the cost of house. And once again, first is when you do single-family residential, it drives it up. If you have big yards because of the price of land, we are looking at neighborhoods and working on plans to go within these neighborhoods to set up, create a plan long-term for attainable housing, affordable housing, workforce housing. But housing that people that are police officers, nurses, and people that work in other jobs in grocery stores and such. And we're looking at some of the neighborhoods that are our best opportunities, where you have housing and these improvements, where you create a plan to improve the houses, but make them still affordable. And we're in the process of looking at certain areas that city work on that, but not to concentrate on the old area making it look like a project-type project.
Yeah, there's a, I think, actually, there's a vacant lot close to me that Lisa and I have talked about. And here's, here's the conundrum. That vacant lot is probably going to, would be sold for a hundred thousand dollars, let's just say, here or there. But in today's market, it would cost two-hundred-thousand dollars to build a house, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty. So that property is already on up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I don't know if that's considered affordable slash attainable housing. Is it? I don't know. Because I'm, unfortunately, I was to have a house in downtown Winter Garden, and I couldn't afford to buy it, buy, had to buy my own house. I couldn't afford to buy it. So the cost of building a house in Winter Garden is expensive. I know this because the land's expensive and it's desirable. However, I think there must be a way that we can balance this attainable, affordable housing with a developer, and I don't really know what's the problem with townhouses. We have some beautiful townhouses down here next to the library, don't we? So please consider all of this when we're looking at these developments. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? We will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one dash, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven with staff recognition.
In second reading, public hearing on October twenty-eighth.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and you have a discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried order one. Orders twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Orders twenty-one dash thirty-three, and orders for the city commission, the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending chapter eighteen, article two, division two of the code ordinances of the city of Winter Garden relating to the building code regulations for temporary roof coverings for all buildings and structures within the city, providing for the process of bringing exceptions and relief from requirements relating to temporary roof coverings, providing for codification, conflict survivability, and effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
This ordinance creates a limit on the amount of time a temporary cover can be used on roofs such as a tarp. The limit is six months, and then we'll have the ability to write a letter to the building official requesting an additional six months. Obviously, if there's commissions such as we have today, where there's limited supplies, you know, a hurricane, anything like that, we will continue to work with people and not cut it off at that six months. If it takes them two months longer, we'll always work with people, as you know. With that, staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Okay, questions from the commission?
I want to thank Director Bash. This is something that he and I discussed before. And we do have a number of homes in the community where there had been tire cover for years. And I think all of you have seen that in there. In some cases, it's an economic thing. And as the director said, we want to work with those folks. Other ones, Jack Cash, that went somewhere else and were renting their homes. So I encourage my fellow commissioners to support this ordinance.
This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion. Some move, but ordinance twenty-one thirty-three with a second reading in public hearing on October twenty-eighth. Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carried unanimously. Orders twenty-one dash thirty-five.
Orders twenty-one dash thirty-five, and orders for the city commission, the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending chapter one oh six, stormwater management sections one oh six dash two, definitions, city of Winter Garden, code ordinances, provide for codification, conflict survivability, and effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
This ordinance amends the definition of pervious surface in section one oh two dash six of the code. Currently, the code comes fifty percent water area of swimming pool against them. And this new definition will allow one-hundred percent of the pool to be considered as pervious because there's such gap in the amount from the top of the water to the actual net that it actually acts as a pond and very, very unlikely to overflow.
Thank you. You answered my question because I didn't quite understand, man.
So staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-five. Any questions?
Questions? I just didn't get the fifty percent of what was at that, so that's what I was.
It was a lot of people, but it's a good ordinance to have.
Over the past, okay. Any questions from the commission? Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty-five with the second reading in public hearing, October twenty-eighth through twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Orders twenty-one dash thirty-six.
Orders twenty-one dash thirty-six, and orders for the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending article four of chapter sixty-six of the Winter Garden code relating to local business tax receipts incorporating statutory exemptions and requirements to submit state licensing or registration as a condition of receiving a local business tax receipt and clarifying the city's enforcement authority provided for conflicts, codification, survivability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
As Dan said, this ordinance amends chapter sixty-six, business tax receipts from corporate statutory exemptions and requirements. Also adds mobile food dispensing vehicles under the tax schedule. Staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-six.
Questions from the commission? Hearing none. Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing, and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty-six with a second reading in public hearing on October twenty-eighth, twenty-two-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Orders twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
For the, and the orders for the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending article two of chapter twenty-two of the Winter Garden city code relating to peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant vendors, vendors to be consistent with recently adopted state permission of licensing of mobile food dispensing vehicles and to change the regulations for such type of businesses, amending section seventy-four dash thirty-eight city code to prohibit mobile food dispensing vehicles from conducting business within public rights away provided for conflicts, codification, survivability, and an effective date.
Did you want their names wrong?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to read both of them, or just want to cut, I want to do those separately? Yes. They're in different sections. Okay.
Okay.
Again, as Dan said, this ordinance amends chapter twenty-two to make cities regulations for mobile food dispensing vehicles consistent with section five oh nine, point one of Florida statutes. Also amend section seventy-four dash thirty-eight to prohibit mobile food dispensing vehicles within city right-of-way or operating within city right-of-way. Staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
Questions from the commission?
What's more, the city manager, sir? Um, I know we've had some folks asked in the past about, you know, can we get food trucks and so forth? And no, generally, we haven't, we've been open to that. It's, how does this really kind of fit into our scheme? I just want to understand it better.
Actually, this was drafted because the states changed the laws, and they limited how governments could deny that. So this actually creates regulation, like the attorney, the angle explaining, this gives us the regulatory authority. Um, we've had this issue with food trucks for many years, and our restaurants and all our local businesses have opposed it because they don't think it's fair because they have employees, they pay taxes. Um, you know, they pay for mortar and bricks and buildings, so our, in all our meetings for our businesses and restaurants, they've been pretty much all unanimous in opposition of allowing the food trucks because it gives the food trucks an unfair advantage. So what this does is it does create our regulations, which allows food trucks, but only in the industrial zoning.
Levels of play. Sorry, Mike, Dan. But currently, we, we require a permit to operate one of these type of vehicles. And the state has preempted our ability to issue licenses for these. So what we're doing instead is we're setting the licensing requirement under our existing ordinance doesn't apply to these type of vehicles. However, they have to still comply with the zoning regulations and other things that relate to non-licensing requirements that work or derive from our zoning and police power fully even from some regulatory licensing scheme that we have for other type of vendors. So like I said, it's, you know, first of all, we have to amend the code because it's now preempted in the way we're doing it. So we're now creating a different way of dealing with the issue.
So that still gives us the ability, like, to improve fast these other eventually bring in truck vendors, so forth, if we're not going to?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make sure we weren't going to.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. Any questions?
If it has to be an industrial, which we haven't gotten to this ordinance yet, but it can't be on the right of way, so they can't be in the streets and the industrial part would have to be on.
Private property. Private property. Correct. Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty-seven with a second reading in public hearing on October twenty-eighth.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now, we'll do ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight, and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Wintergarden, Florida, amending chapter one eighteen zoning of the City of Wintergarden code ordinances to amend sections one eighteen seven twenty-seven and one eighteen seven seventy-two, governing the permitted uses within the I one light industrial warehousing and I two general industrial zoning districts provided for mobile food dispensing vehicles as defined by section five oh nine point one oh two, Florida statutes has permitted a permitted use in the I one and I two zoning districts provided for codification, conflict survivability, and an effective date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And as Dan said, this ordinance changes section of one eighteen dash seven two seven and one eighteen seven seven two of the code to allow mobile food dispensing vehicles as defined by section five oh nine point one oh two, Florida statutes to allow them in I one and I two zone. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight.
Questions for the commission? Once again, this is a public hearing, we will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing, and we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight, the second reading in public hearing, October twenty-eighth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I wonder where are you sticking?
Yes, sir.
Regular business, recommendation to approve the site plan for four zero one six Wintergarden Bank Road. Yes, sir.
It's a site plan review for the property located at four zero one six Wintergarden Bank Road, proposed development consists of approximately five thousand square foot building, the dentist's office and a quick serve restaurant and drive-through, parking and landscaping, all of the rest of the infrastructure was built with the existing commercial development next to it and around it. Plans have been reviewed and approved by the development review committee, and staff would recommend approval, subject to the E R C conditions. Can I be having to answer questions?
Questions for the commission?
Didn't that restaurant be a candy store next to the dentist's office?
If they want to run it out, sure.
It's got to be about.
I think Dennis gives away the candy.
It's got to be about a Steak 'n Shake, that's by the owner, we don't have it.
I don't think it's much of a Steak 'n Shake, does it have something in?
Don't, don't.
I did hear that your Waffle House was still located.
That would seem to be the open mouth. Okay. Questions for the commission? We need a motion.
Move to approve site plan for the four zero one six Wintergarden Bank Road.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve the site plan for fourteen five twenty-five West Coney Road Drive.
The op can is request that you postpone this to the October twenty-eighth.
Okay. Recommendation to approve emergency medical services transport billing services. Thank you, city.
You're filling in.
You're filling in, that's why I was looking to say it, it's getting up, so.
Sean. Okay. Just I was working on this, Commissioner Dula boss, some good points regarding this, we were actually working on this, like I sent out my email last night at Reapburg, you know, to do some research. It's a little bit misleading when you read this because you read the name, the firm's name on this contract, but when the original city on this contract, Tractor Creek, back in on, that was the name of the firm. This firm is actually Digitech, and they purchased the building portion from R one, which had taken over Digitech. R one and asserted health that had some issues in the past, it had some data security breaches and other issues. Digitech has taken over, they're the top firm in the industry, they've never had a data, data breach, they're considered the Cadillac of this type of services. I handed out to you a list earlier to show you all the governments in Florida that actually use this, the yellow ones would be ones that Jeep guns have actually called personally, and I can tell you, they're arms pounding in Orlando, and they all have great reviews, so I can see those concerns, but that was an old company and a different management that's been purchased us up. The recent name is in there because that's what it was at the time.
Yeah, I take it.
I want to thank the city manager for the research, and continue with the older, everybody so loved her, more secure for her.
Thank you very much, sir.
I actually did the easy part, Jose and Frank did the research.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Anything else you want to talk about with this?
Yes, thank you. I dropped it there for a second.
Yes.
As you know, we're moving forward with this, we were going to bring you all the documents tonight, we had the, not just the billing, we had the resolution, et cetera, et cetera. The fact that Chief's not here, we decided to bring those back at the next meeting. The reason we brought this one, because this is a critical document, because this has to be in place before they start setting up all the accounts, so it's the one item that slows the whole process. Waiting two weeks for the other one items does not slow the process at all, so that's why we're going to split them up into two different meetings.
Okay. Questions for the commission? So there's no concern that all the cities, they have the staff to handle ours, too?
No concern whatsoever, because of this type of system, and actually, the more they have, it actually gives us greater confidence because they're less likely to go out of business, as you've seen in this industry, but ambulance and building services, there's a lot of the smaller companies that go out of business, which is not a good thing.
And firefighters, union, and perhaps you're all in favor, give me a thumbs up if you are, or a head shake? All right. Okay.
I know, we got it.
There we go. That's the billing side.
Yeah.
That's a great problem.
Yeah.
That's Chief's problem.
Yeah. Sure.
It's for a new truck.
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
Then we need a motion.
Motion to approve emergency medical services, MS transport billing agreement with Digitech Computer LLC and rent at you, city manager, for his research.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve reduction of code enforcement leads for ten eighty-one Milton Dixon Way.
The owner of ten eighty-one Milton Dixon Way incurred code enforcement leasings in two thousand five and two thousand fifteen, the two thousand five case had a daily fine of a hundred and fifty dollars per day per violation, and this fine was stopped when the property was brought into compliance. The two thousand fifteen case has a lien for six hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents for mowing the property when it's overgrown. The owner is requesting this reduction so that they can sell the home. Staff would recommend the lien being reduced to two thousand five hundred dollars to cover all of the costs incurred by staff with mailings, time put into it, demowing, all of those things. We had previously recommended the thirty day stipulation, the pay request, if we add forty-five days to that, that would take it to Monday, December twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. Staff sees no issues with this, and we recommend that the board approve this reduction if paid by December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Questions? Need a motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Reduction of code enforcement leads for open park pond case.
June fourth, two thousand eighteen, code board meeting case eighteen dash one ninety-four was found in violation, a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per day per violation per parcel was imposed. Case was then split into three separate cases, which is eighteen dash three oh seven, eighteen dash three oh eight, and eighteen dash three oh nine, to be assigned to each parcel. Developer owned part of it, the HOA owned another part of it, both have made their repairs, the developer actually rebuilt the pond twice. So there's been a substantial amount of money put into fixing everything. It works great, it's been inspected and approved by our engineering department. Currently, there is a total of two million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in liens on these three parcels. One hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel. Since they've spent all this money making all these repairs, everything's repaired, staff would recommend that these fines be waived. There's very little staff time put into it.
I suppose it might be the ponds. Okay.
I'm supposing these fines added up because it took them a while to repair it?
I'm sorry.
Because it took them so long to repair it?
Correct.
Yeah. So they should why it took them so long? Were we left off of it?
Well, rebuilding it twice is one reason, the actual work was completed quite some time ago, and they just trailed behind requests on it.
Is this next to Morrison's house?
No.
It's not that one?
It's not that one, it's the series of ponds along that half a mile of stretch, right adjacent to the lake.
Okay.
And I was actually, I was probably responsible for this because I walk my dog there every day, and these ponds had some significant issues, and we thought the best way, at some point, we weren't having a lot of love, so we thought that if we took them to code board, their fines might provide an incentive to get them fixed, and it worked, and the ponds work great now. You know, one of our goals is always to make sure that all the infrastructure is on the park before it gets handed over to the HOA.
Okay. Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve reduction of the code enforcement means, the open park pond, or the case numbers listed.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Might as well get the next two of that, sir.
What is your action?
City movie series, the special events are proposed to be on October twenty-third, November twenty-seventh, and January fifteenth. All three events will be from four P M. until ten P M., and they're free to the public. Staff would recommend approval.
At best, they are movies that are acceptable to children.
They are family oriented movies, it is a family.
Okay. All right, questions for the commission? Need a motion?
It's hard to find PG there.
PG, I'm talking G. What do you mean PG?
Make a motion, we approve the movie then.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, special event, West Orange Junior Service League.
West Orange Junior Service League is requesting to hold their annual golf cart parade on Sunday, December twelfth, from four P M. until six forty-five. Same as years past, they will gather down at Bradford Park, they'll leave from there, travel throughout town, through downtown, they'll work with the police department for assistance at intersections. We will provide a portable restroom at Bradford Park. This year, they intend to go back to Bradford Park to end rather than end it over at Cook again, so everything will just first from there. Again, staff would recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So when they're going back to Bradford, they're going to continue the route then all the way through and parade basically back down to Bradford, correct?
Correct. It'll just be one big circle back to Bradford.
Okay.
And we'll be on the newly paved Bradford Park. No surprise.
They just need to go a little slower, it seems like, a lot of people come out to watch it, and they just get a lot of.
Yeah, they fly by.
But the police are in front of them.
Right.
Yeah, they got it. Questions for the commission? We need a motion.
Motion to approve golf cart parade?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve impact fee, deferral forgiveness agreement for property four thirty-nine and four fifty-five West Klein Street.
As you said, Mayor, this is an impact fee, deferral forgiveness agreement for the properties located at four thirty-nine and four fifty-five West Klein Street. Staff has worked very closely with this, with these property owners, they designed a building that meets all of our strict guidelines for downtown, they've gotten approval from the architectural review and historic preservation board, and will be working on their site plan review before. As a result of the money they put back into that elevation, staff would recommend waiving the traffic impact fees at a total of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Can I be answering questions?
Finally, to interject, as you know, the last time we did this, staff, we kind of erred not bringing this to the commission beforehand, so we wanted to get this in front of you before this project was moved forward. On this project, the developer initially started, do you remember, this is the P U D. that this commission approved a year or so ago, quite some time, it's also adjacent to the, I call them the Jowers pieces, right next door to it. When this first started out, was brought to the city, it was closer to two twenty-thousand square buildings, we felt it was far too much massing for our downtowns, we were, we were very tough on the developer on this, not only just in the architecture, we were very tough in shrinking down the site so it would be in nature downtown to make sure the massing didn't overwhelm the entire neighborhood, I think went through architecture review board twice, and several reviews by Kelly on our planning department, and I believe we're also working now, and Kelly from our planning department is also working with the adjacent pieces, with the Jowers pieces, because somebody's coming in to start working on that piece. A critical part of that is, on those pieces, that all the property on the base side must match residential, so we're familiar with that, and we're also breaking it up, so our goal is we don't have a giant mass on the corner, and it appears the developer working on those pieces has been very cooperative, and has also agreed to this. But once again, we do this because all these things we do, especially today's building costs, drive up the cost significantly more than these impact fee reductions, but at least this gives some, some help to the builders on this, it lessens the pain.
Questions for the commission?
The idea is, if they're not paying impact fees, they can improve the quality of the building.
Correct, it is just traffic, and they're paying all the other.
Correct, they're paying the school boy, their hundred thousand dollar unit, school right here with it.
And it's just to help with those extra costs because we drive up the cost significantly, both in reducing the density and the very, very strict architectural standards. The good news is, is it helps us when we're negotiating on these standards, because when the developers know there is going to be some impact fee forgiveness, they're more likely to cooperate with us.
So this total will be around thirty-eight thousand dollars?
It is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, I calculated it out, based on what they have to offer space and the, I believe, for our essential minutes.
Okay. Any other questions?
We get it back in taxes many times, ever.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, agree with you. Need a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Recommendation to approve agreement for acquisition of Runaway to Dillard Street. Mr. Wade?
Mayor, commissioners, there's a strike, site typo on the first page under issue, it says we're requiring nineteen thousand feet, we're requiring a thousand feet out of the nineteen thousand square foot out parcel in the Bravo Center at the southwest corner of Story and. This property owner owns the main center, they agreed to a very reasonable price with us, especially considering we're impacting the parking, some of their access is going to have to be relocated in those issues. The building has burned down, they are going to redevelop the site at some point, but more importantly, they met with the city manager and staff, and they are proceeding because of the Dillard Street project with the renovation of the whole center. They want to redo the architecture, get rid of a lot of the glass, it's more the old style of shopping center, and they want to convert it to a newer style, more available, realizing that further in the future, the whole center may go away and something else redeveloped there. But they're looking at landscaping of the parking areas, which is a massive parking area, and they came in from California and had numerous discussions with us, and we believe this is a very good program, and what they're about to do is going to be improvement to their property, and we recommend that you approve and authorize the city manager to sign all of the documents proposed on the property.
I won't see any dollar back.
Uh, it's fifty-five thousand dollars for the thousand feet, but that includes the land cost plus the damages to the parking and the access.
Questions from the commission?
Can you give a bit of this?
It's a critical piece, yes. We've been working on this project, acquiring property and this is within the range of what would be paid for properties.
I want to thank Ed and city manager, you've been working really hard on this for a long time, so. And I know that property owners is, is, can be tough too, so I, I thank you. It's good, good for the city, good for them.
Sounds like a motion.
Yeah, that's a real good one.
Yeah, is that a motion?
Need a motion to approve?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of signature by passing on it.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Mayor, if I could have one minute?
Yes, sir.
There was a comment, our attorney. I do a lot of litigation in this area. I have worked for and against every attorney in this area and many attorneys around the state. And when it comes to government law and land use litigation, he's second to none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, that's a film we want to risk business company.
Resolution twenty-one dash ten.
Resolu- resolution twenty-one dash ten, resolution of the city commission, the city Winter Garden in Florida. With respect to the Florida Department of Transportation, Turnpike Authorities, F D O T Turnpike Proposed Interchange at the intersection of Florida Turnpike and Tundra, five forty-five, and the city will entertain all in support of the no bill build option. Of course, that interchange provided for the city and community actions and efforts coordinating and communicating with F D O T Turnpike to accept and in fact, a no bill interchange provided for findings, determination, and request in an effective date.
City manager?
Yes, we recently had a, uh, a community meeting regarding this, you know, probably familiar with the F D O T and Turnpike authority would like to put a, another interchange on Avalon Road. I think it's, it seems to us, but instead of just fixing the existing interchange as an improvement so they operate better, they just want to put interchanges on every road and just about every community. If you look at the map, you'll see just down the street in Oakland, there's one, just down the street in the, in Coy, there's one. So we had a great community meeting. I think approximately a hundred and fifty people came out. Uh, we also had, uh, we worked with the commissioner from Orange County. She contacted residents in Tildenville, so they came out in numbers. Many people, almost everyone, almost everyone spoke in opposition of this. And I think the word got through to the F D O T that there's, perhaps we can be successful and stop them this. And so we thought the first thing we need to do is a resolution. I can tell you, the same night we left the meeting, I was on the phone with Ed and our attorney that same night as we left the meeting. We were contacting each other to draft in this resolution. What I've given you is not going to be the actual map we put into this. I still want to work on it and improve it. It just gives you an idea what the exhibit is. We're going to put a picture in there that'll identify Tucker Ranch and probably one that puts in there in the, in the Tildenville community, both of them. But we just, this has been done so fast and so rapidly, we didn't have the chance to finish it before this is finalized. We will have that, uh, exhibit put in the document.
Okay.
I've heard from a few people here that one, uh, person that's actually a traffic engineer that's called me on other issues, those in Stone Brook. Uh, but it's, there's, why is there a need for it when there's one exit so close for this? Just, this seems no rattle reason.
I honestly not had anyone contact me as in favor of this. And particularly the people that live off of that long road there in this area. Okay, so.
I will move to approve the, uh, resolution.
Twenty-one dash ten.
Twenty-one dash ten.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature by passing on it.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Matters and citizens of Winter Garden?
Ms. Charlie N. Wilder? Good evening, Mayor. City manager and commissioners, I'm Charlie N. Wilder, eight thirteen East Bay Street, Winter Garden. It's good to be here once again. And the reason for being here, uh, standing here is that, uh, this is our fifteenth annual celebration for our veterans and families of veterans who may be deceased. We appreciate every day that you all have done for us. You've been so kind in supporting, uh, this event. And we asking if you will support it again because we did not do it last year because of the pandemic, but it seemed to be easy somewhat this year. And, uh, November twenty-seventh, two P M., in Baptist Church, it will have our fifteenth, uh, appreciation celebration. Now, uh, we'd like you to, and privilege this as always, not only financially, primarily because we have people coming, uh, mad sometimes. City manager, sometimes become your greetings or whatever the case may be. And, uh, commissioner is always there to support, still will. And we look for you, uh, also, uh, may I approach you?
What's the date of that?
So what I would support that you can do to us, we would appreciate it. The last time we were here, the last time you supported us, it was a five hundred, uh, dollar more. Now, if you want to go up ten thousand, you can do that.
But what time is it, number twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
And we expect to see all of you because the last time they were there, so many of them, five o'clock, and who knew they were there and they represented well. We appreciate that so much.
Um, I'm not sure what we have done to pass you. Five hundred, five hundred, I would say, you should do it by. We'll be saying, will we get?
Five hundred the last time.
There'll be some private, maybe a couple of private, I guess.
Okay, so we have, uh, motions, five hundred, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, all of those in favor of signature by passing on it.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Be in there, Miss Wilder.
Thank you. Hope to see you there.
Yes, please. Matters for city attorney?
No report.
City manager?
Yeah, just a couple of items. First, um, I was given a text that I guess Coe, uh, Mrs. Coe canceled their Christmas parade this year. We have not made the net recommendation. I don't know why they did it, but just best for information, uh, y'all, for y'all's, uh, education. We, I've not made any plans to cancel the parade, so we're, uh, probably just move forward unless this commission thought otherwise.
For the rest of the day, you didn't say anything?
I have no idea. Actually, I just received a text that someone had to, to mention it tonight.
Okay.
And the other is, I would like to thank everyone here, the rest of this Winter Gardens, staff, and this commission. You know, I've been here twenty-five years and so tonight I'm turning my thirty-day notice. So that makes sense.
When we say, uh, I'm sorry, Mike, you don't have three books, that's right.
We've got thirty days.
Change of mind. And that is it?
That is it. Let me jump on something first here, which I know is a little unusual, but, uh, I think we all appreciate, uh, what Mike has done. And, um, we've all sat here for twenty-five years and listened to him load about, uh, which I'm looking for the two, about the education in Florida and how superior it does the schools. And after that, to listen to him make such a poor decision, I, you know, I, you know, we obviously skipped some classes. But anyway, we'll, uh, you know, I don't know what, but, um, when you don't have someone that runs it, gives you a company or governor or something like that, there's uncertainty, there's issues, um, and concerns. So from my standpoint, I think we need to address that, uh, right now. Um, and what I'm going to throw out is that I think that, uh, we ought to promote John Williams for the next six months anyway up to, uh, city manager. Um, he's been at the city of Edgewater, uh, for eighteen months. He was manager of the city of Longwood for six years, nine months. Uh, he's been here at Winter Garden for almost four years. Uh, everything I've heard, uh, from both staff, uh, from Mike and from others, um, has been favorable for John. I think anytime that you can promote from within, it works well with all of your employees. Um, so I think that to keep the continuity in our city, that, uh, what we do six months from today, I don't know. But at least we know that we've got a leader for the next six months and somebody to run this. And then we can, uh, assess it and, and make the decision at that time.
I'll second that, Mayor.
I have a motion, okay, you second it. But let's, any discussion?
It's wise.
I guess, I think it's agreeable, I agree with you, Joe. It's wise, we would appoint a committee to, to look at what all our future direction is. Maybe I think this is.
See how, you know, what John will do. I heard John, personally, I think he'll do a great job and not worry about it, um, so. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature by passing on it.
I understand, you're going to say something?
Yes.
Justin, I need to talk about the logistics of this, just so everybody's clear. So honestly, Mike is still here and he's given a thirty-day notice. He still couldn't be city manager until.
Absolutely.
That's understood.
Yes.
Um, in the interim, uh, my office needs to work with John to come up with some sort of, uh, interim contract.
We will come up with something, we'll talk about that.
And then we'll bring that to a future meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so is, uh, that contract will be on a future agenda and hopefully approved before he actually officially.
That, that is my intent, yes.
Two weeks.
Yeah, we got a month. We got a month. And, and Mike said, did say it takes a while, he's good for a couple of years, so. Okay.
Called up too.
Yeah, we'll go there, so anything else? Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of signature by passing on it.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I did it to myself, didn't I?
I think that was for tea last meeting for his truck, I mean, bending right.
It was my excuse for just saying, um, congratulations, Mike, and wish you. And I'm glad we have John and he's got all the experience and we're familiar and he's familiar with our city. Um, I had asked Mike, this was small after all that, well, but anyway, I had asked Mike the other day if you were going to have any upcoming shredding events. And John provided me with a date, uh, Saturday, November thirteenth, nine to one, at eight forty-eight East Plain Street. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Shredding.
Shredding, like, yeah, because hearing stuff. Um, and I know the holidays are coming up and it's a lot of extra work for our staff, so I wanted to thank you in advance because it's always, our city's beautiful and it's the destination, especially during the holidays. So thank you. That's it.
Mr. Bennett? Uh, a couple of things. So obviously first, I'll start with Mike, you know, your best wishes, sir. Uh, I have, for those of you that are like, I moved here four and a half years ago. And while it takes community to build Winter Garden, i- if it hadn't been for Mike's vision and his persistence, you're to blame that here, sir. Sorry. Um, but, but I meant, it was, I, I, when I came up and I looked at the house, I, I loved the house, I fell in love with it. But I've seen a few other houses I liked here in Florida when I'm returning back here. But it was this community, uh, that I fell in love with, you know, that totally won my heart over. And, uh, so Mike?
Thanks. Uh, other things, I'll move on from the motion part.
Uh, real quick, uh, this resolution we just passed, uh, I, again, I want to thank Mike and Ed, uh, from the bottom of my heart. They spoke so eloquently, so passionately, uh, and so logically about the impact of this. Mike took us back to about eight thousand years, so it was a very long presentation, um, but, uh, now he did, he did a great job in talking about the impacts to our two-man-built community, uh, the design of our park and how it affects us, um, the, uh, inducts of traffic, when we widen these roads and, and the impacts to it. It was a very eloquent argument. It, it stood out well and it resonated with folks. And, you know, he started by asking everyone to stay civil and it was a very civil discussion. Uh, and likewise, you know, Ed talked about really the function of a turnpike and, and how it should operate. And this design will turn it into, you know, another I four or an exit every, every few miles or it gets us to disaster. And both those points, I think, were well driven home, uh, and were received well by F D I. So I, I hope this, that is the direction. So I want to thank all the commissioners for the unanimous approval, uh, in, and for the building against the building of the turnpike and for Mike and Ed's leadership on the funds for the pack. Thank you.
Mayor?
We've got time to say our advice to Mike, so I'm not going to keep this one, but I do want to tell one quick story and that is that I do get calls often, people know that I'm in the real estate business and they, I get calls from developers saying, what's going on? I can't get them talking to the city manager, I'm talking to staff, I'm trying to do this, I'm trying to work it. Sometimes there's a little bit of frustration in their voice and I always come back with, just don't argue. Come in, have a meeting, talk to Mike, talk to staff. And I say, how do you argue with success? And inevitably, and you look around the city and the amount of success that we've had in this city and how the residents appreciate what it has done and the, you know, the, the standards that we've held developers up to, you just can't argue. Usually shuts them up immediately because they realize, yeah, you're right, it's a losing battle. Just come in and work with the city and do what they want. So I, I thank, it's, it's, it says a lot because I'm in the business and I know how hard it is sometimes. It says a lot for city manager to have that kind of reputation. So like I said, we have a lot of time to say other things and say our advice, but I just wanted to mention that. Thanks, Mike, for everything. Appreciate it. So Mike's, he came on as city manager a few months before I became commissioner. And, uh, in fifteen years, the only commissioner I can probably say of working with him, I've never had to go and yell at him. We've always been able to discuss everything, have a completely. And, uh, we got thirty days left to go, so I'll start calling John and yelling at him. Get it over early.
Well, you didn't say it the other way, you didn't yell at you. But, uh, yeah, we will, um.
In both ways, in fifteen years.
Yeah, we will, I'm sure have plenty to say at the next two meetings about Mike, but, uh, in the party. But, uh, you know, I think we are going to miss him. I enjoyed working with him for, God, since whenever it was, ninety-five, ninety-six, so, uh, finance director. So it's, it's been fun, educational, uh, interesting, challenging, uh, through all these years. Not from him, just from everything that's going on and trying to come to resolutions of things. So anyway, we will, uh, have more comments as we continue. Well, thank you. With that, uh, meeting is adjourned.